Let's call the meeting order and round this for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, we're good. Council has a quorum tonight. We have Kathy and Gary, Mass and I, and then we have Barry online, so we are good to go.
So you will need to, since Barry's online, you need to have a vote on that for everything?
We just might not vote on anything. All right. So, first up, do you want to let Steve go first or you'd like to? Okay, let's hear from Mr. Higginbotham.
Okay, very briefly, your bi-weekly sheet is before you and the change started in yellow. The first item there, the magistrate's report window replacement, they came to put that in and the company that was putting it in had measured wrong and the window didn't fit and they had to go back and reorder the windows, so that didn't get done. The awning and the ejector pump panels and sub-pump panels, I've given you the expected delivery date on those items and shortly thereafter those were installed. And the HVAC units for the expo hall have been delivered and they are set on their pads and they'll start putting in the electrical panels that operate those next week, so I think we're barring any unforeseen circumstances, that will be up and operational the first couple of weeks in March. And then, as always, keeping you abreast of your one-time fund balance now. I think you're going to have a discussion a little later about potentially changing some of these accounts where they're going to be expended from, so I'll make those changes when you see the report the next time.
Does anybody have any questions? It's nice to see everything moving and getting done and trying more fashion.
Nice to see the spreadsheet.
Yeah. All right, commissioners' comments by Commissioner Plaster.
So, the first thing I want to share is that the commissioners at our meeting today agreed to allow me to investigate a Wayne County application for the Stellar program this year. If you recall, we had some concern that we were not going to be allowed to participate in Stellar, to apply for Stellar, because we had received money through the help program. So, the final verdict, I'll say, is no. Any municipality in Wayne County is eligible except the two that have received community development block grant funding through the help program. So those two are Cambridge City and Dublin. I feel badly, we had no earthly idea that there would be any exclusion, we were never told that that would be the case. And so, you know, we didn't see giving half a million dollars essentially to each of those two towns as punishment. It was, you know, it was a reward for all the work they had done and the rest of the county to be able to help them with their projects. As it turns out, we are able to apply, but those two towns would be ineligible to receive funding. There is an upcoming training session that I will attend on the 4th and 5th of March along with Beth Fields from the city of Richmond. The city has agreed to participate with us. There is a letter of intent that will be due to Oprah by May the 1st. So we're pulling together a team of the willing to go through this process again with Oprah and at least get to the letter of intent stage. It will be a lot of work, but I think it's worth it. There is up to $8 million for each of two Stellar designees at the end of this process. May the 1st, the letter of intent is due, they will then select four finalists. Those four finalists will each be awarded $50,000 to hire consultants to help us put together the community engagement program and ultimately the application, which will be due in, I believe, November. And the award will be made in December. So, again, a significant lot of money available, but again, the one of the benefits is to be able to work with some of the other communities in Wayne County to put together a community development plan that we would work on collaboratively. This cycle adds the element of a community foundation that is county-wide, can also be an official partner, as can an economic development corporation whose focus is county-wide. So it requires a county, one of those county-wide entities, and as many communities within the county that want to participate, except for those two that are excluded because of help. So, we're going to pursue this up to at least the letter of intent stage. And at this point, I don't see any need for any funding commitment. That may come as part of the actual application process, but as I said, there's a $50,000 grant that would go, be able to help pay for consultants and folks that we would need to help us put together the actual application.
Judge, can I ask you a quick question on that, just to refresh my memory here? So you're saying it's a community development grant? I mean, that's what the plan or... Exactly, give me some for instances of what you could use the money for and the people watching. What exactly?
I'm reluctant to say too much about it because it will be based on community input, but pretty much anything that the help program could support, it appears to me that those same types of projects could be supported by these dollars for Stellar. If you remember, the city of Richmond had Stellar dollars that going back probably 15 years, one of the things they did was the park across from the library. I think the was initially funded at least in part by that original Stellar program. So there were a number of, again, community development projects. And we'll find out more at this training session on exactly what...
So not necessarily like infrastructure and buildings and that type of thing? It could be something that would do programming and...
I think it's unlikely that programming is going to be eligible. Remember that this is block grant money that would support construction projects, it could be light elimination, which is a demolition project. It's typically one-time money. There are, however, some other partners involved, it's not just CDBG money. So INDOT is a partner, that would be, you know, road construction and maintenance. The Arts Commission is a partner, the State Tourism Group is a partner, the Health Department, the State Health Department is a partner. But aside from the highway, INDOT and the community development block grant, the funding is at much lower levels, in the tens of thousands and maybe the hundreds of thousands as opposed to millions from those.
And the last round was just announced today for what the $8 million was awarded, and it clustered into these groups, infrastructure, a lot of water projects, clean water, wastewater, et cetera, a lot of water projects. And for the first time that I can recall, seeing many arts and cultural projects for small communities.
Which again fits into the community development kind of quality of place.
I've never seen quite so many arts and cultural projects, so it was mostly infrastructure and culture that was distributed today, all eight million.
Okay. We have been reviewing the information that, the decisions that you all came to, recommendations from ARPA funding, so we have had some conversations and this is what we've come up with. So let me explain this listing to you, and I'll wait until everybody gets a copy. But if you'll recall, the approved recommendations is at the top. So from the list, from the list that the commissioners gave you at the last meeting, these are the things that you approved. Then you also recommended a dump truck we paid for out of this, so we've added that because the commissioners approved that last meeting. So, that totals $2,150,000, which left $2,150,981, that is still available. The next list is what council recommended to the commissioners from the other sources, and so they're all listed there, it was $2,53,236. And you'll see three asterisks there because those are things that we have included in our new recommendation back to you. So at the bottom list is what the commissioners approved to bring back to you as kind of a counter proposal, and I'll, let me just go through those one at a time.
Has Barry got this list?
No, no.
I'll take a picture.
Barry, can you see this?
I'll send it to you.
Yeah, why don't you take a picture?
I will.
Text it to me, thank you.
It's on its way. So, the, that bottom list, again, we put in the electronic speed limit signs. We think that that is a significant step in terms of traffic safety, and we would love to expand what is currently available in Wayne County and help some of the small towns, but also some of the areas in the county that are not, that are not towns, not incorporated towns, but for example, if we discuss Williamsburg on US 35, that would be an area that we think we ought to look at as a possible place to put out those signs. The sheriff has, we've discussed with him several times, he supports this from the perspective of traffic safety, and so we ask you to reconsider that. The second thing on the list is a combination of the courthouse exterior and the annex generator. You can see, those are the first two things on your recommendation to us, and it actually works out to like $601,059, the original, that's the total amount. We're recommending $600,000 just so we can kind of make the numbers rounder and work out to what we have left available. So $600,000 for those two projects, $300,000 for highway projects where you add a million, but we have separated the parking lot fairground issues as you'll see in a minute. Then Expo Hall HVAC, we have $300,000, which unit's rounded down from the original $344,000. And then you see the next item, parking, storage, and building improvements at the fairgrounds, at $250,000, parking we think is the highest priority there. But because we have purchased all the new furniture, we need to make some, something available to store that where it's not in the way and people aren't using it, but they want to use the room.
So is there a building?
The recommendation from the fairgrounds folks was add lawn to the...
Expo Hall.
First Bank Expo Hall. We're not convinced that that's the best choice, so we want to look at some alternatives there. One would be walling off some space within Expo Hall and perhaps a smaller area in the Coolman Building where that equipment could be stored without adding another building or addition. So we want to look at those things. The other thing that we've talked about at the fairgrounds would be, and recall that the roof for the, for Coolman has already been approved, and once the roof has been replaced, and that's the original roof on that structure, then we think it's important to replace the ceiling tiles and the light fixtures in that building. And we don't want to do it until the building, the roof is replaced, so we don't want it to be ruined by leaks while we're waiting at the roof. So that, all of those things are options there, and then that leaves an uncommitted ARPA $600,000. We do that because we know that there are still ideas percolating, that we want to have dollars available for discussion purposes. I think that at some point in the next few months, we need to commit those one way or the other.
Yeah, they have to.
We have a little bit of time left, we're getting a report from one of the help projects that should be coming in in the next couple of weeks. So that would leave $600,000, that's still uncommitted. And a few of these ideas, just like a few of your ideas, will require some additional work to establish a more exact number of what the cost would actually be. And if, for example, we come in with a line item of $250,000 and then we come back to you and it's actually going to cost $210,000, then that $40,000 would roll into the uncommitted ARPA until we get everything sorted out. So that's the total amount of those commitments, $2,150,000, which is, leaves $981. I just left that off for the moment, but we're still tracking every dollar because we don't want to leave a dollar on the table. Now, if you'll direct your attention to the statement at the bottom with the asterisk, this is what we had talked about at the last meeting, but trying to put it into specific words that we can adopt. Commissioners and council agree that savings to the general fund, and that would be specifically the $600,000 line item for courthouse exterior and annex generator, and then the $300,000 for Expo Hall HVAC, so $900,000, which would be saved to the general fund because they're already budgeted and the money is appropriated in the general fund. That that money can be put into a projects line item, which will require agreement of a majority of commissioners and a majority of council to be spent. So, you know, with that, with that stipulation, I think it's pretty clear that we want to continue partnership, working together to make sure that we're spending those dollars in the best way possible. So that is our counter proposal to you all from your recommendations of the last meeting.
Does anybody have any questions?
You mentioned that 500,000 in the highway, over change.
The 500,000 has already been committed and it's not, it's not on this list as it came before the last round.
They've chucked a million highway.
Yeah, I think this is a good compromise for both of us.
Jeff, did you, Gary had mentioned on the, was it the horse barn, Gary, to move it or something? Did you have time to check into that?
We discussed it. Steve, you have a comment from, based on...
Our fairgrounds committee will meet tomorrow, and that's on the list for discussion.
I just wanted, because I know Gary had mentioned...
The estimate from 2008 to do that was...
1.5.
1.5 million.
It's probably 3.5 million.
It could easily be 3 million at this point or more.
I don't think that's something we can actually have a contract either by the end of the year.
You know, it would take a while.
But I don't know, I don't know, and I'm not sure if Gary knows, why they wanted to move it at whatever point that was. What would be the reason to move it? I don't, I don't know what that is.
And that would be one of the things I'll ask tomorrow, because I've got some folks from the, there'll be a person from the fair committee and the extension office, so that would be one question I will ask.
Well, wondering if there were increased parking available for that fair area, because there's a parking lot that they use for horse people all night. You have to go all the way to the club to get in there, so that's just east of the horse barn. Show arena, that would move would free up some prime space for exhibitors, food vendors, all that kind of stuff, too.
I think there was, there was not support from the commissioners, and I feel free to speak up, but the cost of that is so significant that I just don't think we can support that at this time. I know that the original conversation in 2008 was that a significant part of that expense would be paid by the equestrian folks from, you know, private sources.
And it was going to be, if the plan was to phase in over a number of years, it wasn't to move it all at once.
So, you know, we'll, we'll continue to look at that, but I don't see that that's a project we can fit into this process.
Yeah, I think we're still kind of in the baby steps of hiring a marketing person and getting things really rolling in the right direction right now. Hopefully we'll be bringing in so much money, we'll have to figure out what to do with that. One of these days.
There you go.
He said the highway, 500,000.
Uh-huh. 300,000.
You got 300,000 here, you said that's not 500,000.
We already, we already committed 500,000 for the tanks. That was not part of this discussion.
So these, these highway projects are ones that have been, like, you pick and choose out of the list?
Out of the list.
Their wish list, basically?
Right, right.
Black painting the building and some of the other things that...
Correct.
Yeah.
Chloride.
Chloride, tan.
Those are the...
There's a number of things on there that could fit within that $300,000.
Yeah.
And if there's something in addition, you know, Highway has some money that they could, they could add to that total, if it's an important enough project. And, you know, if it's important enough, there's still $600,000 that's uncommitted, and if something from another project from Highway moves to the top of the list, there's, we're not saying that we couldn't entertain that as part of that $600,000.
So Jeff, the, the million that we had the last meeting, that we marked out and put a million, you're changing, what you're saying is you're changing it to 300,000?
Correct. However, we also have, if you look at last week, or last meeting, it says including parking lots at the fairgrounds, so we've moved that as a separate line item, parking, storage, and building improvement.
So we're at 550, actually, I mean, real close.
How much is the parking break out of that? You got three, three things there.
Correct, and we don't have the numbers. If you have, if you have concerns about any of that, you know, we can, we can move that into the uncommitted and come back with a number, but I'd like to have some commitment that you think those issues are important enough that we can use some of that $100,000 that was allocated for engineering and contractual to get some clear definitions of what we're going to do, how much it's going to cost.
We went back to the highways list of what, everything they would like to have over time, not, they didn't really expect they could get everything on their list all at once, but it totaled a million, two, and the largest ticket item on that million, two, is the 500,000 for the tanks.
Right.
So that's already been taken off, so that brings it down to 700,000, and...
This is, this is 800,000 out of the million, two. So it's, it's two-thirds of their wish list. So I think that's pretty generous, right?
I do, too.
You're talking about...
I mean, we bet all in.
Storage fairgrounds for tables, chairs.
Correct.
We're not talking about building those, building the footpath, yes.
Either, either an addition to Expo Hall, which is what Brad actually requested or suggested...
A bump out.
Or walling off some of the space, I mean, there's, what, 50,000 square feet or something?
That's what I recommend that we just...
I think that would be a lot easier and a lot less expensive.
Or actually wall off, yeah.
Exactly. And so that's, that's what I think we're leaning towards, but we also want to get the committee's input and, you know, how much, how much space can we allocate to storage without changing the use of that building and what it can be used for in the future? But it's so big, it's...
The area, like the office, where they just kind of pile stuff anyway, is a perfect place to just go ahead and make it look better.
And I think they already have a little storage area kind of in the back corner of Coolman that we could look at, that's, that walling off some of that area, and so I think it's doable without rebuilding another building.
So Jeff, I'm sorry to keep asking so many questions. So on the still available, where it says highway projects, including parking lots at the fairgrounds, one million, but then when you go to the new commissioners' recommendations, it says parking, storage, building improvement at fairgrounds. So is that parking improvements at fairground, like if we do part of it with that and we need more than the other part is in the million? Because it looks like you're saying parking lot at the fairground are both breaths, both spots.
Not, because essentially if you approve this list, you can cross off the list.
This is either more...
The middle was what we, the middle was what we recommended to them last time, and this is what they're coming back to us with.
Right, but I was just saying, you know, it looks like it's on here, but then again, it's up there for possible, so you want this plus you, if there's any left, you still want to go back to that.
This is impossible, that's our recommendation from by...
We're saying we're not, we're not doing the ones in the middle, we don't agree with that.
Right, but if you have money left, you're going to look at that, right?
No, we're saying that we can look at anything. With this uncommitted money, we can do essentially anything that both bodies agree to, a majority of both bodies.
Better give it time before the end of the year.
Absolute...
We think it's excessive, it would give the highway more than anything they have ever dreamed of over time, and we think that these two highway items, the 300,000 plus the 250, which includes a little storage remodeling, is enough.
So, any other council members have any questions? Because I think we can take a vote on the compromise, okay?
The statement at the bottom of the page, Jeff and Fred, that commissioners and council agreed to put savings of the general fund into a projects line item, I think, unless I'm misunderstanding here, Tony's motion at our meeting was that consideration for those monies that are saved in the general fund would go towards establishing some type of longevity schedule for employees. Does this statement disregard Tony's intent?
I don't think that was his motion, he talked about that, but we can't use one-time money for recurring things, and we...
We're not talking about one-time money, we're talking about the general fund by paying for these projects. by paying for these projects out of these dollars and not out of the general fund.
I still view that as one-time money.
Yeah, still into our one-time line item from the general fund. And we, I mentioned this last month, or at the beginning of the month, and so did Jeff when he was talking. And we didn't take a vote, but everyone was shaking their head yes on that. I thought it was understood.
And I absolutely do not disagree that we should continue to look at a longevity program. In fact, over the last five years or so, I've suggested two specific programs that we could start. And it was determined that, the feeling was, we didn't have enough money to do that. Again, this is ARPA money, is the origin of this money. That's clearly one-time money. And so, what we're suggesting is, and what Tony was one of the first to say, is we should not use these one-time dollars to start or to try to continue ongoing expenditures. And so, that's what we're trying to do here. But I absolutely support looking at establishing a longevity program. We need to determine what that looks like and how much we can afford to put into it. And that's why it's been a council, you know, primarily in council's court to propose something. And when I was on council, so.
Unless he's talking about a bonus, and I think we've rejected the concept of a bonus. A bonus would be a one-time thing, and that is not a solution to the longevity issue that we all want to solve.
And I thought, I thought when Tony said that, that, you know, kind of making that trade-off and what we would save out of the general fund to what Barry said would be more of a, here's some seed money to start that, that we could put aside.
There's nothing in the minutes at all that refers to that. And I know Tony mentioned it, but that's just his thought at the time.
And.
And I understand that. I just think in the discussion that we want to ensure that that is still a topic of discussion amongst commissioners and council as we start towards budget season or later this year. That was my only question.
Yeah.
And it is not illegal to fund year one of a longevity program. In fact, one of the things that was on the original list was to fund year one and possibly year two of additional positions created for the courts. And it was Tony who said, no, we shouldn't do that. We should work that into the recurring budget. So, I think we're open to that discussion. But what this is saying is, whatever projects would be developed would be an agreement between a majority of the council and a majority of the commissioners. And we're not putting any restriction on what that project could be, as long as there's agreement.
It's would not outrule that.
No, no, it's fine. And I, yeah, I totally agree with you that we should do it that way.
Because I said all along, I don't want to see any new projects created that we have to continue with ARPA money. Therefore, I would like longevity, anything on that to come out of that funding that we get every year.
If we can't afford it the first year, we can't afford it the second, through the tenth year. So, yeah, it needs to, that needs to be something we work into the budget this year. So, personally, I'm ready to vote for this, the new commissioner recommendations at the bottom of the page. If anybody opposed that, we will wait, but.
I think we should wait just because Tony hasn't seen, unless you didn't get it sent out, I think it's so. Tony hasn't seen it, Bob hasn't seen it, just, that's just my opinion.
There's no urgency that can't wait for two weeks. But if you're ready to vote, certainly.
Well, the problem I see with waiting two weeks, and I understand that Kathy, but we have to get this moved.
We need to get things going.
And.
Even if there's only half of these that you're ready to agree to today, that at least moves the law a little bit.
I mean, there's no reason that we can't come back to you and say, in a couple of months, and you've got an extra forty thousand, we can say, hey, would you go ahead and consider this again? And you might say yes. You know, but we've got to get a lot of this written in stone because it's, yeah, it's going to come quick.
So, I don't see any reason why you wouldn't at least approve the six hundred thousand and the two that are listed there for three hundred thousand piece.
Well, these are all things, except for the speed limits, mine's also on our list anyway, so, yeah. And I'm okay with, I'm okay with, you know, us kind of to consensus on that. We're not going to go on the sword over the speed signs, you know.
My thoughts on this are that, yes, I agree. I'm not in favor of the speed signs, but this is a discussion between us, a compromise. And I would not hold up the whole thing over the hundred thousand dollar. Not that it's an insignificant amount of money. It is significant.
It is.
But I feel that between the desires of council and the commissioners, this is not a bad product at this point.
Yeah.
If we did approve it this morning.
I understand Kathy's desire that we wait.
I know Tony is not one that likes you to spring something on him and.
But like we said, these are all things on our list.
I'm just saying, I know how Tony is.
He's not here to do so. No, he's not ill, so, oh, no. So, I'm going to propose that I'll entertain a motion to go ahead and accept these recommendations at the bottom of the page and that we move forward together on getting all this started and getting it done. It's got to be committed and under contract, so if someone wants to make a motion, I'll entertain it.
I'll move, proceed, yes, yes.
Including the statement at the bottom.
Including the statements.
I'll second, I'll say move.
All right, we have a motion. In a second, I will take a roll call vote. Barry Ritter?
Aye.
Max Smith?
Aye.
Gary Saunders?
Aye.
Kathy Williams?
I'm thinking about it. Let me think a minute.
My vote's aye.
Um, okay, aye.
Okay. Motion passes.
Thank you very much. We have our commitment to keep you informed every step of the way.
That's fine. That's great. I think it's good for us to compromise and move on down the road.
And I just want to say this, my hesitation was not necessarily the project. It was just to let Bob and Tony have a look, and then, so that was really more my hesitation than the other. But I get you can't work forever.
Thank you.
Anything else, Jeff?
I don't think so, unless you have questions.
No questions.
I have a little news item. Back almost a year ago, Kathy and I hosted a team from the Indiana Community Action Poverty Institute that a survey could be available to us for what, twenty-five thousand dollars or something to do a study on how we might be able to obtain more money from HUD for continuum of care grants for this region. Wayne County's in District Nine of HUD. And we proceeded to say that is something we'd love to take part in to see how we can maximize our share of low-income housing, low-income and homeless housing. And so, after months and months of pressuring them to do this study for us for free, they did. And yesterday, Dr. Erin Macy from the institute presented her findings and a first draft of a strategic plan for District Nine. Since she's statewide, she couldn't do it just for Wayne County. She had to do it for all of the eight counties in District Nine of East Central Indiana. And the first thing that I just wanted to share with you that she found after putting District Nine under a microscope is that up to twenty-eight million dollars that's distributed in Indiana for low-income and homeless housing, our district, twenty-eight million statewide, District Nine has historically, and as recently as last year, got only one hundred thousand. So, we are now, this strategic plan is to go forth and get our district a much more equitable share of these housing funds, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We have more things to move on to. Let's have a motion to approve the workshop minutes from January seventeenth.
So move, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, Dr. Robert.
Yes, she did.
Barry Ritter?
Aye.
Max Smith?
Aye.
Gary Saunders?
Aye.
Kathy Williams? My vote is aye. Motion passes. I'll have to ask if anybody's.
I'll make a motion if we approve the minutes from last workshop.
We have a motion in a second. I don't know if we have to do a roll call. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side.
Go on you.
Motion carries.
All right, we just have a couple transfers to take care of. In the auditor slash plat room, we have Fund eleven eighty-one. We need to move a thousand, or that was thirty-three six seventy. We need to move a thousand to twenty-two one ten. We talked about this at our other meeting. It's money into their office supply line.
So move, second.
Motion in a second. Barry?
Aye.
Max?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Kathy? My vote's aye. Motion passes. The next transfer we have is ARPA money, Fund forty-four five oh one from the uncommitted ARPA funds, one hundred and fifty thousand to forty-four five hundred. Capital equipment, that was for the dump truck that we voted on a couple of weeks ago. Do you have a motion?
So move, second.
All right, Barry?
Aye.
Max?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
My vote's aye. Motion passes.
And Beth, would you repeat that again? I'm going to write that down for Mark.
Yes, it's right here.
Oh, you have, okay, we're good.
All right. That's all we have tonight. Have any else, anything else they need to discuss?
I do want to, a little bit, the fleet committee had a long meeting today. Some important things were discussed. Our actual first vehicle to go online auction to try that out should get started the next week or so, which is, I think, very good. Public defender, well, that health department vehicle is in place, in good shape. We did talk about the identification to go on county on vehicles. This discussion for quite some time. We had a prototype to look at. It's going to be presented to the staff and departments at the next meeting, get their input. So, that's probably progressing. We did talk about new vehicles to come next year. We don't have our day on the table around. We budgeted for two sheriff's vehicles. They're also going to get a van, so probably the commissary fund will buy one vehicle. We'll pay for the one vehicle, but we may need extra money for, to go with vehicle amount for the van. That'll be later in the year, so we'll see how that cuts out. But we do have to replace a van that they're using daily now that's got a hundred and seventy-plus thousand miles on it, so.
Thank you.
I do have one other information item if I can take another few seconds. So, in the courthouse on the second floor, there is a statue of Governor Oliver P. Morton. For as long as I can remember, Governor Morton has been missing the thumb and forefinger on his right hand. So, I have been working to find a sculptor locally. Worked with Sean Dingworth at the Richmond Art Museum, and he found a lady who is capable of replacing that, those digits. And she is willing to do that for us at a price of not to exceed three hundred and forty dollars. I've talked to the commissioners, and they're agreeable to allow me to pursue this, allow Ms. Sexton to fix the statue. My intention is to generate three hundred and forty dollars of private money to take care of the county's art collection in the courthouse. So, just information item. We'll be working on that at some point this summer. I hope to be able to invite you over for a ribbon cutting to salute the governor's new digits.
With that, I'm going to leave and take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Would you like to adjourn, Barry?
Aye.
Max?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
My vote's aye. Thank you. See you, Travis.
I would like to say that I appreciate County IT setting up the Zoom meeting for me to attend tonight. This is a great opportunity to be able to do this and not miss a meeting. And the audio worked extremely well, better for some of you than others.
It's really good tonight.
But it worked really well, so thank you very much.
Thanks for attending.
Safe travels.
See you.
Thank you.